Preparing livestream. Good? Good? All right, word of Alderman, work session, it's called to order. First item on the agenda is the police facility needs assessment presentation. Chief, you're up, I think.
There we go. Oh, that's better. Okay. On June 23rd, the RFA for the police facilities assessment was posted and let out. Proposal had a deadline of July 21st for proposals to come back once that closed. We found we'd received 14 proposals from different firms, not only throughout the states of Kansas, Missouri, but several other states as well as far south as Texas, and I believe there was one in Minnesota, if I remember right. Those 14 were reviewed by staff, a panel that included Ms. Wagner, Ms. Mitchell, Captain Tony Rotman and myself. We, we met, we went through all of them, we called those down to what we considered to be the top three. And surprisingly, we come in an agreement rather quickly. There was no bloodshed and we took those final three that were reviewed by that same panel and included the mayor and Alderman Hartman. And trainer HL was selected to award the bid to. And then on August 19th, the board, or excuse me, September 7th, the, the board approved the contract and would award it. The trainer. Shortly thereafter, we started working with them and worked through several meetings and the rest of their process, which I'll let Mr. Pitts, Pence explain here shortly. And they've been great to work with. We're really pleased with the product they've delivered. And look forward to them presenting everything to you, answering any questions. And hopefully working with them in the future. So I'll turn everything over to. And I'm sure he will answer your question. Thank you, chief. Good evening, Mayor Alderman, pleasure to be here. Thank you, chief, for the introduction. It's our pleasure to be here this evening to present the findings of the space needs assessment for the police facility. I want to appreciate the opportunity to work with you, to work with Ms. Wagner, Ms. Mitchell, and chief and captain through this process. It's, as you said, it's been, it's been, it's been a great teamwork effort together. What we're going to walk you through this evening is kind of the work product and what we've tried to accomplish along the way. If you have questions, we're going to do it at the end, but feel free to stop me along the way and answer anything that you may have. I'm happy to address anything as we go along. So there were kind of five different tasks that we began out as we began this process. And really the things that we wanted to understand is where are you now? What are your goals? How do you want to work? Because so many things is we've been doing such things the same way for so long. We try to kind of take you out of your comfort zone, try to understand how do we want to work? Part of that was actually doing some tours of other facilities. You see other departments of similar and similar sized facilities work. And then from there, it's like, how do you want to work? So now we've understood this, we've kind of walked through it. And so with those benchmarking tours, it really helps us answer some of those questions. And sometimes it's easier to say, this is what we want to do, and this is what we don't want to do. And so it's a good way to really understand that process. We started off with a survey of the stakeholders. So we sent a survey to chief and he distributed amongst his team. This begins to give us kind of a high level benchmark of where we are dealing with, understanding some of your existing facilities, understand potentially some of your goals along the way, begin to capture some of that information. We came in and we did an extensive tour of the existing building. It's about 2,700 square feet. We walked through all those spaces. You guys are very familiar, I know, with this building and what goes on there. But really, the, the building lacks the space is really needed for an effective police department. It lacks a lot of the privacy for confidential interviews, for confidential discussions, and the ability to have efficient police work. It also begins to lack a lot of amenities to recruit and retain the brightest. As you compete against some of the other area metro police departments that have done similar type work throughout the years. So then we began to look at, okay, how big does this facility really want to be? And so much of that goes down to the size and the police department and the spaces that go in it. So we began to look at the population growth for the city. We use the percentage rate that was in your comprehensive plan to begin to target where we are today. And we are going 20 years out. 20 years is our planning horizon that we use, which was pretty standard. But that does not mean in 20 years that you're going to be full, that it kind of is completely done at that point in time. Really what that means is we begin to plan for it. We should kind of hit its stride in that 15 to 20 years. And so you still have the ability to go forward from that point on. We then began to look at from that population trend, some staffing ratios. So the Department of Justice uses a staffing ratio of an FTE, a full-time equivalent person per 1,000 residents. It allows us kind of a national benchmark of police, police departments across the country. Right now at 2022, you are at a ratio of about 1.8. You have 20 staff where you're just shy of 11,000 residents. If you think about the state of Missouri in similar sized communities across the state, that's about 2.5 is the average. Doesn't mean you have to hire to that level, but it just kind of begins to benchmark where you are compared to other facilities. A lot of this benchmark begins to look at customer satisfaction within the community. And how is the policing being able to done? What do we think the actual ratio is of different officers? So as we begin to benchmark for it, we used your current ratio that took us that 20 years out, that takes us that 36. And we also looked at it from that 48. So what we've done is we kind of looked in between to say, where does that growth want to occur? Now, in police departments, growth does not happen by adding a department. So it's not like we can just stick a wing on the building and all of a sudden we have a detective wing. It happens where we had another records clerk. We had two more detectives. We had six patrol officers. We have another level of administration. So we need to build that growth internally into your building that allows you to organically grow as you move forward. So with that, we also then begin to look at your organizational structure. So we worked with the chief and we said, okay, here's how you are today. How do we think that that wants to move forward? What additional levels that could be involved within that structure? So we looked at potentially some different levels from a hierarchy, adding a lieutenant level, and then also additional officers within certain areas, and then also within the patrol department. The largest growth going forward is obviously going to be the patrol. Because those are going to be your deputies that are, and your officers that are on the street. From that really begins to inform us of the number of spaces and the size of spaces that go into the building. So we sat down and we worked through each of those departments and we said, okay, what do we need? How many offices? What are the size of the offices? How did, again, how do you want to work? Do you want to meet in a conference room? Do you want to have some, a small table in your office to be able to meet? Let's make those uniform across to the department. So there's a hierarchy of level of offices. They're all about the same size. And then let's think about what can be open workstations? What needs to be private offices? From that, that begins to build our program. And ultimately, what we show is a program of about just shy of 24,000 square feet, 23,643. So again, this is planned for that 20-year horizon. It also is built in growth within the different department areas. And then it's also taken to account the potential, if municipal court would come back into the city, how could that occur at this facility? How do we create flexible space today that could be adapted into municipal court in the future? We then kind of know, okay, we know how many people we have. So now what's our parking requirement? So we begin to look at the number of staff that are in the building, knowing that not everybody's there at the same time. We have a shift that happens. But when one shift is on and other shifts coming in, so we're doubling up that parking that happens at that time. So we take that into account. We begin to look at how many fleet vehicles you have, because we know if you have a take home car, you don't have your personal vehicle and your fleet vehicle there at the same time. So we took that into account. And then we began to look at the public parking. The public parking for this, for the actual day-to-day operations of the police department is pretty low. But once we factor in a community room that's built in here, and so you can have neighborhood meetings, boys and girls scout meets within there, what is some of those things that build upon that? And then if we think to the future with potential for municipal court or a large community training room, well, how does that begin to impact it? So as you see, we had a parking number of around 85 that was divided amongst staff and public. We wanted to separate that and I'll show you that on the site here in a minute. So what does that do is it informs us of how big of a site we should be looking at for this department, this facility. So we take into effect how many square feet. For this size of a building, it makes sense that it's a one-story building, because it doesn't really begin to stack from the different operations. We look at potential future growth that could occur within the building. We look at the size of that parking. And then we look at all the other things, the space that goes around it, the site work, green space, entry drives, separation of those areas. And what that informs us is we should be looking at a minimum of about four acres of land. And so from there, we then kind of figure out, okay, where do we want to go with that site evaluation? So we looked at a variety of sites, two that were controlled by the city and some that were not. For the purpose of this evening, we're going to focus only on the city-owned land, just to make sure that we keep any other things confidential. We looked at two different sites. The first site is here, it's just down the road. At 169 in South Bridge Creek. It's just at the end of the main street from downtown. As you can see, it is about an eight acre site, but of that eight acres, a little about a third of it was in the floodplain. And so the buildable area begins about five and a half acres within that site. So that fits well for the size of facility that we are looking at. We also looked at a site that's just south of us here. Is what's the potential that we use the city-owned land that's south of existing city hall? And what does that begin to mean? As you can see, it's less than an acre, which means that we would go multi-story with this facility. But it also means we're going to displace all of your existing city parking. And we're going to put an additional load on the downtown from the parking for the department's vehicles, city vehicles, and so forth. So we didn't think it made prudent to study this option further at this time. So we began to look at the side A and really understand what that could be. From there, we really began to look at the plan. And we really broke these down into different components. Areas that needed to be towards the back of the building, what was less things, less visible to the area? What are the things that needed to come to the front, that visible piece, which that courtroom, that multipurpose space? Where's the public lobby? Where's the entry for a secure soli port to bring anybody who is arrested into the building? And so it began to inform us with this type of a form. It is centered around a central courtyard space, and I can kind of walk you through the different areas here, that allows us to bring natural light into the middle of the building. One of the things that we have really been leading on the way on is trying to provide professional work environments for law enforcement officers that are in extremely highly stressed job. And so one of the things that really helps reduce stress is that ability to have views to natural light, views to the outside. And even within this controlled courtyard, we have the ability to step outside within that space, not be on the display from the public as they drive by, to have that little bit of moment of respite as we look through. So in the bottom right in that blue area is that multipurpose community room that has the potential to transition into a municipal court in the future. So it's got office space that's building behind it, but allows us to have that flexibility today for a large meeting space. We have found within the communities that we have done that these become one of the prime meeting spaces within the area. We did this within the city of Gardner, Kansas. And it is the top requested prior to COVID, meeting space that they had in the city. And it's really an enjoyable space. They use it for local training, but they also use it for regional law enforcement training. So they're actually able to bring other departments in to have training activities at their facility. That center yellow box is the public lobby that would have direct access into that community room. It also have direct access into the records and the police window. Next to that is also just report taking room. So if you want to walk in, sit down with an officer, there's a space right there where you can have that communication. The area that's on the, on the pink, on the right-hand side is the administrative wing. So that's where the chief and the captain's offices are. The upper right-hand corner, blue, is the fitness area. We've located in that area that also has an outdoor access. So if there's a potential to have other city staff be able to come to this building, utilize the fitness area, there's an entry area, there's lockers, there's restroom. But it remains separated from the main secure part of the police department. Next to that is the locker rooms for male and women. Down at that purple then becomes the investigation suite. So there's a large conference room for the investigators. And there's also interview rooms where they can bring somebody in, they'll have the technology in there for recording, viewing, to be able to have a safe and secure interview. The large blue area on the left-hand side is then the patrol area. So it's kind of the noisy, dirty end of the building. So that's where the sergeants are, patrol riding, where evidence collection occurs, where you have animal control, all the different officers, offices that happen within that area. The upper left corner is the purple for evidence and property storage. And then the bottom line, yellow is holding for those that are arrested. How that begins to work on the site, you can kind of see we've angled it towards that corner to be able to really have that approach as you come from both the north and the south, really be able to give you an identity in that intersection and really make a statement within this building for the city. The front area of the parking is for the public. As you see, we have a separate entry allows the public come into the space. And then we have a separate drive that allows patrol to be able to come around to the backside of the space. So we've used the building really to shield the patrol parking from that front entry space. The blue area that you see is the floodway. So we've been able to maintain out of that floodway space. There's also the opportunity to be able to connect rails and trails. And so you could have a trail along the creek and on the river and be able to connect that even to your downtown. So there really becomes opportunities to use this anchor as a connection point for your city. And this just begins to kind of show you what that potential could be. You kind of kept the materials fuzzy on the outside until they really move forward. But it allows you to begin to see the volume where that community room would really create that anchor on the corner of the building. And you can see the, the, the entry towards the middle of it. And then the areas that are a little bit more secure come around to the backside. So just to kind of give you a little bit of flavor of how some of these spaces work in other buildings that we've looked at. So the upper right-hand point, that's that community room I talked about in Gardner, Kansas, is actually also a safe room. So it's designed what we call ICC 500. So it's actually designed for 250 mile per hour winds. So highest essential buildings like this, law enforcement buildings require a space within the building that can act as that, whether it's an emergency operations center, a place just to be during a storm event, so you can be able to respond after the fact. We have the public lobby space where again, we try to have very much a customer service friendly attitude as you come into the building. The, the left-hand side picture shows that courtyard space again, which is from the gardener. And then just some of the other spaces from fitness to patrol lockers. It's as simple as having a locker that is specifically designed for an officer. What has power inside, you see a drawer down below where they have boot drying. It's vented so they can put their vests in there. You walk in, it doesn't smell like a locker. It actually has, it's a nice space to actually to be in. And it's a simple thing like that, that really can go a significant way when you think about recruitment and retention of your officers. And then it's kind of some of the other business ends. So the bottom left just shows holding, the upper right shows evidence. It's just creating purpose-built spaces where we can be able to control evidence, also control the smells of the evidence. And I'm sure there's been days where you've walked in here and realized what's happened over the weekend. But it's really to control that. And then just places where officers can be able to hang out, have meeting space, a professional work environment. So now, what you've probably really been wanting to know is, is beginning to think about the cost of this. So how we began to develop this is we created a narrative and sent it out to a couple of different contractors to put some pricing together. It basically set a level of quality from architectural materials. All the exterior, we looked at brick, masonry, from a decorative, from that size, so it's a low maintenance to be able to maintain from the longevity of the building. The site development of it, all the AV, IT data equipment that goes in, mechanical systems, everything that's really built up for a 24/7, 365 building. And as you know, costs over the last couple of years and even more with over the last couple of months have been escalating significantly. This just begins to show in the picture on the upper right is how materials have changed in the last three quarters. We have seen dramatic escalation going forward. And so what we've done is, is take that into account as we've looked at this specific facility. Some other things that began to impact, as you know, prevailing wage in the state of Missouri. Site A does have that floodway. And so we're raising the building pad up to make sure that that building is outside of the floodway. As again, as I said, the market has seen continued increased costs on HVC roofing and steel. And it's even more exacerbated in the Kansas City market. It doesn't take long just to drive south and see the construction work that's going on. And that is happening across the metro. And so it's just adding to the labor market. It's already been pretty significant. So what we have budgeted for this project is about a 12% escalation. It takes us to quarter three of 2023, which is a potential where this project could be, depending on how it was scored. We also did comparisons of some local stations that have been built within the last couple of years. And so this is kind of hard to read at that size, but what it does, it begins to look at what those different departments are and how those different costs per square foot begin to escalate forward. So the two, the second and the third one in, the second one is North Patrol, which is just by the airport in Kansas City, Missouri. The third one in is Gardner, two facilities that we did. And so it begins to kind of benchmark, because the department has toured those, understands the materials that go into them. And so it kind of begins to give you a good sense of where we are within the cost. And we are basically right in the middle of those two different facilities. So as we begin to look at the construction cost for this project, kind of see how it breaks down by different division. But the bottom line is escalating this to quarter three of 2023. Puts us about 517 a square foot or just over $13 million construction cost. Construction cost that needs to be added to the soft cost of the project costs, which includes the design fees, contingency, furniture, fixtures and equipment, any potential moving expenses, bond costs, commissioning, construction testing, all those things that add up. You can kind of see the bottom line is we are just shy of about $16 million total project cost, both the construction and the soft cost. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Who's first? Former officer, you that all?
Looking forward to see what further comes from it, if it's doable, stuff like that.
Okay. Can you kind of go over your process of designing for different sized communities? Because we're obviously not Kansas City, right? Or, or even Gardner. Our budget is nowhere near where theirs is at. Can you kind of walk through that process and how you guys looked over the design, taking that into account? Okay. Right.
The key there is really to begin to go back and understand, okay, what assumptions have we made?
Gotcha. One other thing I noticed in the packet is you had 6% per year. And then the next bullet was 12%. But if it's 6% per year, we're actually at 1.123 and not just 1.12, right? Yeah. Right. But it's a little over 12 with the 6% per year. Okay. It actually escalated up more than that if it's, if it goes up to 7% or 8%. Okay. Alderman Smith, any questions or comments?
It's like a thorough proposal. Kind of like Dan, he used to see how we would come up with the funding for this.
Thank you. Alderman Atkins?
Funding would be my biggest concern right now. Love the building, you know, it looks nice.
Alderman Shuttler?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the funding obviously is, is important. I would just be curious, you know, with some other, maybe looking at some other ways to cut costs by maybe moving it more towards a modular type of design where we can do it in phases, things like that. Some, and that way we can figure out how to come up with the money.
Yeah. Yeah. And I get the natural light and a lot of, you know, extra angle or extra corners and different things. But the other ones you guys had in the packet were less corners, less cutouts, all those things cost extra. So that would probably be something we'd have to discuss if we want to get the cost down. Alderman Kowalski? Okay. Anybody else? Appreciate it. It's been good seeing you again. And chief, thank everyone that participated. I know throwing out the surveys and doing everything else is time consuming and Tony's back there too. I'm sure he had some things on the list. He finally got a decent sized office now, so. He's not crammed in there. All right, next on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, could I just, I wanted to chime in just a little bit on the, the budgetary piece of, of this. The study for both this and the personal recreation facility were included in the 2021 budget in order to provide information for us of those costs so that we could continue longer range planning and budgeting for that. So we wanted to get this information to you all as those projects are completed. And as we start working as staff on our budget development process that will occur over the next several months, particularly looking at the operating budgets, but then pulling information together on the long-term capital improvements. And we have a five-year capital improvement plan, but we also have changes to that as, as new items come up. So beginning over the next couple of months, staff will be working on developing budget information. We'll bring operating budgets and discussion of operating and capital needs forward in probably the May timeframe. And then as the board will recall, in late May, we have a governing body retreat on the agenda. And we'll have an opportunity to have discussions at that time. So I wanted to kind of put into context the information that we've been bringing to folks over the last several weeks.
Thank you. Any questions for Cynthia?
Is there any four projects, public safety project like that, or any grants, federal, federal ways to get a little bit off the top?
Of a facility, it's hard to find grant funding for facility construction.
And that might be a question for the presenter too. You guys work on lots of these.
Not necessarily a grant or just, I don't know. I guess it is a grant, but any other?
Any other funding, yeah.
Magic cash bags that drop out of the sky, anything like that.
Chuck was talking just this afternoon about planting a money.
Oh, we know what Chuck's talking about.
As it will, yeah. Thank you. But, and I don't know, Andy or chief?
The Department of Agriculture has a program that helps with projects like this. Some of it is grants, some of it is low interest loans and stuff like that. The problem we run into is we're not considered a rural community. And we don't meet, we're well above the threshold, the poverty threshold that most of those things hinge on. And we're like two to three times where that threshold is when you look at average incomes, average house prices and stuff like that. So it's a double edged sword. You know, it's, it's good for the community that we're, we're such a strong community when it comes to finances and stuff like that. That means we don't qualify for free money is what it comes down to. But we have looked at some stuff like that. But Cynthia is right, it's, it's really hard to find anything specifically for buildings, especially now. Yeah, yeah, they are. And then, you know, the federal.
Yeah, yeah, they are. And then the federal government benchmarks everything and, you know, they pick what they're going to hinge their decisions on. And it's usually centered around poverty levels, average cost of homes, average household income. And then they start throwing in crime rates. And when they look at crime rates, they're always looking at violent crime rates. You know, these things were very high end when they look at very low things. And then this thing. Our crime rates are very low when they look at very high crimes. So I think the likelihood of that is probably pretty slim.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else? Gotcha. Good, move on. All right, direction finder, study results, presentation.
We'll have the consultant comp in just a moment, but wanted to let the board know that two years ago, we did our, actually pushing three years ago now, in 2019, we did our first direction finder survey for, to determine citizen satisfaction. And included in this year's budget to do the survey again. This provides good benchmark information of ourselves over time and our performance, and also of how we compare to other communities in our region and nationally. I don't know if you have all had a chance to take a look at the 200 and plus page document. The information is, we're very pleased with the results. Staff is meeting later this week to go through it and, and look at areas that we, we've got some areas for improvement. And also to celebrate those successes. So you'll see some information coming out on social media over the coming weeks outlining these findings. I'll turn it over to Ryan from ETC Institute to provide a summary of the information as presented.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wagner. Thank you, Mayor and Board for having us here this evening. It's a pleasure to be here.
Can you talk a little closer like?
I apologize, you seem to never quite tall enough. And I apologize, I also have like severe allergies and I didn't start taking my Zyrtec until last night. So I've got the sniffles and a little bit of a cough here, but rest assured it is allergies. So. Alrighty, so as we have our presentation, just want to make sure that works. Needs to be on.
Okay, sorry. Killed it.
Yeah, if you want to advance it for me, that'd be fine.
All right.
All right, so we'll go this way. All right, thanks so much. All right, well, again, a pleasure to be here. My name is Ryan Murray. The Assistant Director of Community Research for ETC Institute, I've done there about 15 years. We administer these types of surveys from the municipalities throughout the city of Central, but also nationwide. So we've got a lot of experience in these results. More than that, we provide a lot of context. So tonight, I think Ms. Wagner was correct. All right, so there's a lot of good news here, but the purpose of the survey, next slide please. Was really to objectively, objectively assess satisfaction, but beyond that, the, the point of the survey was to determine priorities for improvement. So even if things would have been phenomenal, which they pretty much were, and there's a lot of significant increases across the board. We would have developed priorities for improvement. And that's a way of continually maintaining public sentiment, or at least keeping your finger on it. And making sure that we're planning for the future when it comes to those items that most impact satisfaction. Beyond that, we compared your trends to 2019, and I'll present most of those results tonight. But within the full report, you have a full breakdown of those results, including the frequency tables, as well as the full set of GIS maps. So if you have any questions, we're always down the street in Olathe, and you can find us there and send us any questions you might have after this, if I missed anything. Next slide for me. So in regards to methodology, this was the second survey conducted. They just don't want us to know how good results were. All right. So here we are at location of survey respondents. This is good representation throughout the community. If you look at a zoning map and kind of overlay these two things, you see that there are some areas that are missing surveys. Typically, commercial corridors and things like that, you're not going to have any dots. None of these dots should really rest on top of anybody's home, but a nearby location, just trying to randomize that just a little bit. So we make sure that we're not pinpointing or calling attention to any particular responses. But at the same time, making sure we have good representation throughout the community. Go to our next slide. The bottom line upfront, this is, if you take away anything tonight, this should be the slide. Positive perceptions throughout the community. Over eighty, eighty percent of respondents indicated that they're very satisfied or satisfied with the overall quality of life in the city, which is actually a 13-point percentage point increase from 2019, which is quite significant. We would say based on the margin bear of the survey results at about 5%. That would be a. It won't go.
Should I continue?
All right, sorry, folks. I promise the results are good. I don't know why they're giving us such trouble here. The city also rates significantly higher than our national and regional averages for a lot of the key service. Alrighty. So bottom line upfront is that perceptions are extremely high throughout the survey, and you can see that a quick glance at any of the charts and graphs throughout the, the report. And also my presentation this evening. I think one of the key things to take away here is the contextualization of the results. So your results might be high, but how high is high? Beyond that, some of your results might not be to where you'd like them to be. For example, a 73% rating is maybe a C grade, you know, in our local schools. Well, if you're comparing comparatively performing significantly above regional and national averages. Then we know comparatively that 73% is actually a really good performance mark. So we just want to contextualize some of that with our benchmarking. As I mentioned previously, the purpose or the design of the survey called for priorities to be developed based on our important satisfaction analysis. And this year, we only had two top priorities for the most part, maintenance of major city streets and neighborhood streets. That is kind of a hiccup or a troubled area for just about every community we see. However, I think that more contextualization is, is good here. And anecdotally, based on our experience. High performing communities consistently see these types of items at the tops of their lists, which usually tells the consultant group or folks like myself, that when you see these types of high priorities, you know that the community is performing relatively well, otherwise. If we saw other issues like parks and recreation or police services and things like that at the tops of this list. We'd be more concerned about the organizational health of the community. So just trying to contextualize some of this. The ratings are phenomenal. I think also to kind of make sure we manage expectations for the next survey. You know, it's our recommendation, we do this every couple of years. It's going to be hard to see 14% increases, you know, year over, year over, year. Eventually, you're going to run out of people to, to give you satisfied marks. So managing expectations for the next survey, but also keeping in mind that there is still some room for improvement based on our important satisfaction analysis. If we can move forward now, two slides. We're going to show you perceptions for pretty much all the charts and graphs this evening. Out to the blue on the left is going to be our satisfied or positive remarks. The middle is usually going to be yellow or gray. Neutral responses, and then out to the right are going to be those dissatisfied or poor responses in, in red or yellow. As you can see here, we're not seeing much of that across the board when it comes to the major perception items. As it relates to the community. And in fact, one of the important ratios to note here is the 81% compared to 3% who are satisfied with the quality of life in the city. Basically, it tells you you're hard pressed to find anybody in the community that's going to really give you a poor mark as quality of life as it relates to quality in life. And the ratio there is just quite astounding, 81% to 3% giving those types of ratings. What's more, is that the few items that we count, kind of grade card items and stuff I look at first. It's all at the top of this list, meaning that you received exceptionally high ratings across the board. And I think there's just really astounding to kind of see. 2019 was the way that it was. It was your first benchmark survey to see now some of the improvements is just pretty astounding, considering the last couple of years that we've had. And some of the decreases in satisfaction with some of those grade card items that I saw at the top of this list. If we move forward one side, we'll take a look at some GIS maps. This is just to kind of get you kind of situated with what you'll see in your full report. This is the quality of overall services provided by the city. As you can see, everything shaded in light blue there, which basically says that we're equitably serving resident needs throughout the community. If we saw any problem areas, which we'll see later on in some of the maps, they would be in yellow or in orange. There's really not much of that going on here. So we're really doing an excellent job of serving community needs. We'll see the same thing on the next slide. Where again, we saw some really great ratings from throughout the community, about 80% or so of folks saying they're satisfied, which also lends itself to these maps. Full set of maps for all of the Likert scale or five points question scales will be found in your full report, and you can go over those or have any questions for us, just let us know. But if we go to our next slide, we'll look at the overall satisfaction with city services. I've highlighted two items here. This is the flow of traffic and maintenance of city streets. These are a couple of our top priorities. But really, these are a couple of the areas that receive some of the highest levels of dissatisfaction, and they're actually really related to our two top priorities for improvement, which is maintenance of city and neighborhood streets. So folks not only took the survey and told us what they were thinking in a really positive light, but they also thoughtfully took the survey. And we see that in some of these mixing of results where we see higher levels of dissatisfaction in areas that are directly impacting some of those areas they want to emphasize most. We go to our next slide, we'll see the maintenance, or excuse me, the maintenance of city streets. We do have one particular area that rated in that neutral category. If we go to our next slide, we'll see the overall flow of traffic and congestion management community. Where it's just a little bit north, where we have some of the, the folks giving those dissatisfied or maybe more neutral ratings as it, as it were, based on the shading there. These are a couple of our topper or higher priorities for improvement. And I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted those and kind of had a review those maps before you get the full report if you haven't seen it yet. Next slide, I know Chief is still here. Yes, this is a fantastic slide for him and his staff and everybody that's working hard over there. Folks are really telling us that they're pretty safe in just about any category here. There's a large group of neutral responses on that bottom item, which I think eats away at some of those very safe and safe items. Likely folks that just don't visit your parks very frequently at after dark or at night. But still very low levels of unsafe or very safe responses there. So doing very well in all of those major perception related items. If we go forward two slides, we'll talk about trends. This is comparisons from 2019 to 2021. There were 71 items that were able to be compared. You saw significant increases in over three quarters of the 71 items. So significant number of items saw increases. To provide some context, the Parks and Rec survey questions were asked a little bit differently this year. We got a qualifier in order to rate the item. You had to have said, yes, I've participated or used that particular item. But when you actually separate those users out, we saw dramatic increases across the board in all the parks and recreation items, which says that those users or those folks most familiar are actually giving you really positive ratings there. And it might have been some of the non-users basing responses on perceptions in the 2019 survey, that was the reason for some of those ratings back then. We go to our next slide, we'll see the satisfactory city services, the overall quality of city services here. As you can see, significant increases are marked by an upwards arrow. While not everybody received a significant increases, there were increases in just, in really everything that we were able to compare from 2019. There were some really significant ones in maintenance of buildings, facilities, as well as the quality of water sewer utilities, flow of traffic, which was one of our kind of troubled areas. And I know in the 2019 survey, also kind of moving into this survey in terms of dissatisfaction rates. And then the effectiveness of community planning and development towards there at the bottom. Just really significant increases in satisfaction, which means over the last couple of years, the city's done something really well to ensure some of those perception items are being met, and that folks have a little bit more information in order to rate those items effectively. If you go to our next slide, instead of going through the whole charts and graphs, which you will find in your report, I just pulled out some of the significant increases. I starred those items that were parks and recreation related services for this table. There's a lot of significant increases, as you can see, there are 71 in total. If you go back to our next, or to our next slide. This is a continuation of those increases. And then if we go to our next slide, we'll see decreases. There were no significant decreases. So we either stayed the same or marked better than we did in 2019 in every single item, except for six. There were six items listed at the bottom of your screen that did see lower ratings in 2019, none more significant. Police services, sheriff services across the country received mixed ratings over the last couple of years, as you can tell from some of the media stories that we've heard, the distrust in the police, Black Lives Matter. All of those items have played a major role in satisfaction marks across the country. It should be commended that you didn't receive any significant decreases in any of these areas, given everything that's gone on over the last couple of years. I would have expected to see decreases. I would have really put money on them being significant. None of them were here. So I think that's really something to be proud of. That's why I want to make sure we made a point of it in reviewing our trends. I, I just think it's phenomenal. Great police relationships in the community, it seems like. If we move to our next two slides forward, we'll talk about benchmarking. This is really the portion of the, the results where we can contextualize where you are. So some of the ratings are great, some of the ratings are phenomenal, some of the ratings look mediocre until we compare them with some of our peers. And so what you're looking at here is national ratings, city of Smithville in blue, US average in that goldish orange color. Some significant increases here, but as you'll notice, you know, quality of city storm on a runoff storm on our management system, you might have thought at 59% you weren't performing that well. Looking at national average, you're matching that same number. Same with flow of traffic congestion, well, you know, 58% doesn't seem like a high rating. But again, comparatively speaking, it's actually a pretty good rating right along the national average, not significantly above, but definitely not below. If we go to our next slide, we'll see some more of the same. However, the perception of the grade card items all rated significantly above our national average. Folks in Smithfield definitely have a positive perception of where they live, and I think it's really showing through when we talk about US averages. Go to public safety services where we rated above significantly in all but one area. And then to our next slide is feeling of safety. Again, only a few items were comparable there, but all significant increases. Code enforcement is the next slide. One significant increase above the national average. This is a tough one. If you call for a code enforcement issue, you're hoping that your neighbor gets enforced upon. If you're the neighbor that gets enforced upon, you're dissatisfied with that particular interaction. If you called to have somebody reported on and they don't get an infraction or they don't remedy the problem, then you're dissatisfied as the reporter. So this is a really difficult item to be in. We see consistently kind of in that 50% range in satisfaction there. But as you can see, comparatively speaking, that's very common, a very difficult issue to deal with in every city. Maintenance of city services is the next one. Significant increases in all of those. Excuse me, this was parks and recreation? I apologize. Yes, parks and recreation. This is where I was hinting at earlier. Where we saw a dramatic increase in significant, significant changes from 2019 in all of the responses. This year, we asked folks who had an opinion based on experience, not just if you had an opinion. So this is really saying something here that folks that actually participated or used, according to the survey, rated significantly higher than they did last year, smashing all of those national averages there. Next one is maintenance services. Very good in all of that. You know, maintenance of major city streets, one of our troubled areas or one of our priorities or investment this year. Two thirds of your residents are satisfied. Most communities are luckily, lucky to get above 50% satisfaction. One of my larger clients hovers around the teens in that particular rating. So, you know, anything around 50% is phenomenal. Two thirds is outstanding, I would say. If we go next, we'll talk about communication services. If we go next, we'll talk about communication services. Doing very well there. This is perception. So I think if we scoot back one, it'll be communication. Yep, this is, I think, one of the major areas where you should all should be focusing on some of your patting yourselves on the back, and there's a lot of that to be done here. Communication has a direct correlation to overall satisfaction in a number of specific city categories, particularly those where residents don't have firsthand knowledge. So you know if there's a pothole, but you don't know what council or what the board of your community is doing to promote growth and development in the city. So you don't have a lot of perceptions on that, but you might think that the multifamily development went in too close to your home, for instance. Communities that communicate effectively with residents see these types of ratings and some increases, like the city of Smithville did over the last couple of years. Communities that don't communicate effectively with residents continually see decreases in problem areas continue to creep up. So it's really important to focus on communication as we move forward, and we've got a little section about that as we kind of move out of trends and past priorities. So we can go forward to, we've already seen the next slide. That's our grade card slide performing very well there. As a place to work below the national average, but not a significant deviation from that. Priorities for investment. We ask residents to rate their satisfaction. We need to qualify that with some kind of importance rating. What we found is that folks for years were really just overrating or underrating their satisfaction with given city services. It's important to know which city services are receiving below-average satisfaction and above-average importance or emphasis ratings. And so we meld those two together. This is reported a little bit differently in your paper report, but I like to give you a little bit higher level of analysis of this particular IS ratings. What we see, maintenance of major city streets, streets in your neighborhood are the two top priorities for improvement. Nothing of ever, nothing else really comes close to being a top priority. Usually, I'd have a couple of things highlighted in yellow there. Those are really the two areas that we're going to focus or we should focus on most, and if we do make some improvements there, we have a really good chance of continuing to see increases, or at least maintaining the level of satisfaction that we're receiving now. We also did this for Parks and Recreation Services. Should be no surprise that there are no high priorities there. Those ratings were phenomenal. Folks that participate and have firsthand knowledge exceptional ratings across the board to all those items. While some were very important to them, we should focus on the importance aspect and make sure we're continuing to current service levels in those areas or slightly increasing them as community residents kind of call out for. We go to our next slide. We're going to go into communication. I like to harp on communication because we know that it holds such a high role in changing satisfaction remarks across the country. Satisfaction service trends increase in just about every area, except for the information provided through the city's social media sites. Not necessarily a terrible thing. If we go to our next slide, we'll see that most folks are currently going first to word of mouth. This has increased significantly from two thousand nineteen, which is a little bit of a concern. Given the size of the community, I'd say that's pretty common in communities of your size. Oklahoma City or Kansas City, Missouri, if I were to see word of mouth, I'd be very concerned why folks are going word of mouth to get information about city services, but I'm sure you all have great community reach, so it's not uncommon, you know, to have firsthand knowledge through word of mouth in communities like Smithville. What I would like to see is continued emphasis to the city newsletter and the city website for the reasons that we'll see in our next slide. Those are the two most preferred, far and away, sources of information from the community. We need to just continue to bolster our website. It's in really good shape, according to respondents. Beyond that, city newsletter, if we can continue to reach into the population, if we can continue to disseminate that information effectively, we're just going to have a better time making sure folks know what we're doing, how we're combating crime, how we're doing public service projects, and all the good things that city work does that has a hard time kind of filtering out of these rooms sometimes. And it seems like Smithfield's done an excellent job of doing that over the last couple of years. Just need to continue to bolster that, knowing which are the primary sources that are most preferred by residents. In every survey we do, if we skip forward two slides, we've got some unique questions here. Stuff that we don't ask in every community, but pertinent to Smithville here. This is, would you be willing to pay increased taxes or fees for any of the community amenities, facilities listed below? Folks indicated a pretty high remarks, over fifty percent for both of these, at a community center and a swimming pool would be something they'd be interested, or at least would have the appetite for increased taxes or fees. Those are difficult items, you know, it's about half. I wouldn't say take that to the boat. A lot more work needs to be done on that, but promising results for that. I know new police facility falls under forty percent. We know how to communicate. It seems like we've been doing an effective job at that over the last couple of years. If we could continue to leverage those communication sources we know are most effective, we could definitely see some sentiment change over the next couple of years, you know, regarding a new police facility, if we manage that effectively. If we go to our next question, this is kind of putting your money where your mouth is. Which ones would you most prefer seeing? Community centers, let me pull again at the top of that list. I always say, regardless of age and ability, those are two amenities that almost every resident in your community could potentially use. And so it's common that we'll see those types of items hit the tops of these lists. Go to our next slide. In summary, the IT gods didn't want us to do this tonight. I think it was important that you all heard how well you performed. I think every person in city staff, every forward-facing employee, starting with Ms. Wagner, moving down, should be commended for these results. This is hard work. These are not results I see frequently. I was kind of nervous about this. I know I had a conversation with Ms. Wagner. I've got a few northern clients or northern Kansas City clients. I'm always a little bit terrified of those results. This was a welcome surprise. We've had ups and downs through high-performing communities over the last couple of years. This is really hard work to see these kind of results. So I think that's it's important that everybody knows that. Beyond that, I'll take any questions, anything I can't answer tonight, I'll take offline and send Cynthia an email.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And you're right, it is, it's great to see this, and staff has been working very hard. So thank you. Go around the room. Start with Marv this time. Alderman Atkins.
Yeah, we only had like four hundred-plus surveys for a town of ten thousand.
Yes, and I only wanted three hundred, so I wasn't willing to get four hundred.
So in 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 the world of surveys, is that a good saturation point or?
Yes. Well, next I get to about four hundred. They usually go above and beyond that goal. But four hundred is a really strong sample size for this community, and we recommend a three hundred, which is kind of bottom of the line, just based on the number of households in your community.
So if we went on our next survey, would they go to different demographic people other than what ones you've already talked to?
Yes, yes. So we maintain those samples year over year. We know some folks are renters and some folks are displaced or moved, but we draw a random sample every year. So we're not reusing, while there might be a few folks that have gotten it year over year, it'd be very unlikely that, you know, the third time we do it, somebody would have gotten it again.
Thank you.
And Marv, if I could, I think that would be one of the reasons to continue the process as well, to continue getting those those different levels of responses. I also, you talk about the the number, and Ryan, we talked a little bit about this. We know over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of processes that have included surveys, and we had pretty significant responses to some of those surveys. And in a conversation with ETC, those numbers, I'll let Ryan explain it, but that's a self-selection for doing those those surveys. So this random, the randomness of the sample is what helps kind of normalize for that.
Yeah, so there was a Parks and Rec survey, I believe, that went out that you got a thousand responses from or something of that nature. You know, Ms. Wagner is correct. If you're putting a survey out there, you know, the folks that are most likely to respond to surveys are going to drive to that survey and take it. And when it's Parks and Recreation, that's typically well-organized special interest groups, not always, but typically from what I see, so soccer groups, swimming groups, football groups, whatever it might be. When you get to that point, folks are really wanting to tell you what their opinion is. The key to this research is that I've basically strong-armed people and given me their input. So I'm not really touching people or strong-arming anybody, but I have multiple follow-up attempts. I'm going to send you a paper survey in the mail. It's going to come with a postage-paid return envelope and a link to fill it out online. Makes it pretty easy. Folks still don't want to fill it out. In order to ensure representation based on Census Bureau numbers, according to your demographics in your survey, I have to continually follow up with folks, either by text message or email or mail in order to combat the non-response bias, which is basically those folks that are harder to reach. It just takes a lot more follow-up attempts to reach them. And so while only four hundred surveys here, these results are reliable at the ninety-five percent level of confidence, which means if we were to do it a hundred times, ninety-five out of a hundred times, we're going to get these results, plus or minus are about four-point-seven percent margin of error. Great point.
Alderman Chevallier.
I don't necessarily have a question about the survey, but I just want to say that, I mean, this should prove to folks, right, that filling out surveys is important. And you know, it's not just something that that you feel, oh, no, no one's ever going to fix anything. No one's ever going to care. I mean, with these with these improvements, I mean, it shows that, hey, we we hear you, we're going to fix things and make things better, and staff did an awesome job doing that. So, yeah, I I hope, I can't wait. This is the next survey.
Yeah. And again, expectations should be mild on increasing satisfaction. And I have to tell this to Alath all the time, you know, you have ninety-five percent of people that are satisfied. It's going to be difficult to get to a hundred. Same with eighty-one percent. It's going to be difficult to get to ninety-five, and it might take, you know, four four more years, two more surveys, but it can be done.
Alderman Kudelski.
I'm I'm the same way. I'm just so proud of everyone, city staff, board members. We do listen, and we, it's proving that we are making a change and we're doing what's best for our community.
Alderman Smith, second meeting, what do you have to say?
Actually have a lot to say, and that is, I'm just delighted to see the results of this as the packet was sent to me. And it just tells me that we have the right people in place all the way around, so I hope we don't upset the applecart too much around here.
Yeah. Alderman, you at all?
Great job putting that information together, so it's easy to read, and it's obvious that the city has spoken and is seeing positive forward progress that we need.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? It is a work session, so y'all are welcome to make any comments. No. Chuck, I know you're always asking for money for streets, so I mean, the survey, the survey says we need some more. Move the numbers, got to keep fixing streets.
Shade is best under the money tree, yes.
Alrighty, well, Cynthia thought we needed more than an hour for this, so we started early, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn and give everybody a little break for the next one. Thank you to have a second. Alright, all in favor of adjourned, say aye. All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned for about thirty minutes.